She's in water street. The place now.
Okay.
It used to be not here. This is our chapel as we were kids.
All right, I'm gonna, it's, it's 4:04, so I'm gonna call this special joint meeting to order. For the record, today is May 12th, 2025. It is 4:04 PM. This is a joint meeting of the Board of Finance and the City Council. It looks like I have all of the council members, except for David Oliver, present and attending in person. And I have all of the Board of Finance members, with the exception of Christopher Anderson, whom I don't see online. So we have a quorum of both boards. I think, in the interest of respecting everybody's time that they've given on a special meeting, we'll try to get through this as quickly as possible before we begin, though. Could we stand and pledge our flag? Okay, so item number one on the agenda is a review of the potential impacts of implementing a phased approach of the 2024 grand list. And this is discussion, but for the purposes of controlling the discussion, I will entertain a motion to do so. So do I have a motion to discuss?
Come on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Iveyne. All right, so I'll kick it off if I can. You were each provided with the OPM, Office of Policy and Management, white paper, if you will, on what a phase in of the revaluation would look like, or what are the rules for doing so? I don't think that there are a whole lot of questions on this for most of you. You've been doing your research on this for a few weeks. But obviously, for anybody in the public that's listening, there are three methods for phasing in an assessment that increases, that has been increased as a result of the revaluation. The first being based on the assessment increase, the second based on an assessment ratio percentage, or a third based on the assessment ratio for different classes of property. None of the graphs or tables, spreadsheets that have been provided, take into consideration two or three, they've only been considered based on the assessment increase, which is item number one. This law, section 12 dash, excuse me, 12 dash 62C subsection B, also is clear that because we are discussing the October 1, 2024 grand list, that we are allowed to phase in over a five-year period of time, which means nothing less than 20%. That doesn't mean that we couldn't go with a 25%, or a 30%, or a 50%. So the spreadsheets that were discussed at the City Council meeting last week, and have been, they were discussed at the Budget Subcommittee meeting, and have been provided in your packets, do show what a phased in for two, three, four, or five years would look like. And I think the next document is not my document. Is this your document? Thank you. Do you want to just talk a little bit about this? Just, please? And I want to, also, before you start, just acknowledge, I appreciate that Stacy came in to spend a little time with us this afternoon. I know that she wasn't feeling well and was not in earlier, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. So I prepared two documents. One here is a residential house, the median house. And the other one I took between medium, median value, and then our high-end value, and I put it in the middle, and I put together the two spreadsheets. So those are the two different values of the homes that I was using. If you look at the one with the median value, that first box in the upper left-hand side, it shows if we do no phase in, how does this affect the taxes? So it shows the increase on the residential. It does show a decrease for commercial property owners. And it shows the business personal property matching the residential. And I picked a business, obviously, I used the same value business as I did the residential. So you can see apples to apples what happens when you start to do a phase in. How do things start to shift? So you can see in the first phase in example there, the two-year, what happens. Yes, your residential does see a decrease that first year, but your commercial and your business personal properties start to see an increase. And then that, that second year into the phase in, your residential sees an increase. For the two years together, you can clearly see residential is getting, yes, a very small reduction, but your businesses are seeing a large increase. That's because we have much more residential property out there than we do commercial property and business personal property put together. Business personal property, we have roughly seventeen, seventeen hundred businesses. We have about a thousand commercial and industrial properties. So you're shifting everything to businesses and business personal property. And then you can see as you go down in this graph, what happens each year with a phase in, and how does it shift that tax burden? The whole point of a revaluation, and the reason why the state put it into a five-year mandatory revaluation, is because over five years, we know the market changes. It changes for residential, commercial, your businesses come in and out. So you put it on this revaluation schedule so that you can even out the burden. It equalizes the burden amongst all classes. That's what this revale is done. You can see that with that upper left-hand corner, you know, grid there. And then you can see as you work the phase in, it takes that equalization away. You're shifting that burden somewhere, and in this case, it's going to shift it to your commercial properties and your businesses themselves, so the business personal property. So that is all the assets that they own. That's their, their tables, their chairs, their, their working every day property that they have as an asset. And then that, that second sheet that I gave you, it's the same thing, it's just a home that is a little higher value, so that you can see that same shift and how it affects. If you have any questions at all, I can. Yes?
In this document for the phase in, this is assuming that there's no, you know, increase next year in, in the size of the budget.
Correct. I did put on there that this is assuming that there is no growth in the grand list, and there is no change in the budget. You add a dollar to that budget, and that money, you know, those figures are changing. So without adding anything to your budget, they're going to see that shift and that increase every year.
But yet we know in the second year, I'm going to look at our finance people, contractually, you have obligations to increase the revenue for next year, correct?
Yes, you have the contractual increases. This also takes into effect revenue, so if we lose any sources of revenue as well that offsets the expenses, you're also going to see that shift in the taxes.
Thank you.
So Stacy, just as I'm looking at this, in your calculation, year one, year two, let's just stay with the two-year for now, does this take into consideration in year one, those one-time revenues that we have as they relate to the motor vehicle transition tax? Which we would lose in year two.
The only thing I did was take the mill rate and apply it to the assessments that change.
Okay, so this is.
Because those assessments are only going to go up because of the phase in. I didn't, and you had the, the mill rates worked out on your sheet, so I used those same.
Use the same mill rates, okay, good.
The same mill rates you had.
So my mill rates, yeah, just for the people sitting around the tables, my real mill rates in those out years did take into consideration the loss of those one-time revenues, so thank you.
So I was, I was running off of your sheet with the mill.
Yes, yep, okay, good.
So we can compare apples to apples.
So any questions? I know it's really hard to look at a spreadsheet and, and try to digest it all. Questions? Please, yes.
Mill rate, so in year one, goes from the forty-seven, and this is the phase in for two years.
Yes.
Goes from forty-seven point nine seven to thirty-eight nine six.
Uh, no, that very first column I repeated in every one of those examples. That first column with that forty-seven ninety-seven is the 2023 grand list, just so that you had them side by side and can see it without shifting your eyes all over the, all over the paper. So that year one would be 2024, the year two would be 2025.
Okay, and the answer is yes, you are correct. And we did it, yes.
Not thirty-two.
Well, thirty-two, if there's no phase in. Year one phase in would be a thirty-eight point nine six. And then if you went with a three-year phase in, the first year would be forty-two point zero five, second year thirty-eight point one five, and third year thirty-three point five eight. But again, that is assuming no change in revenue, and it is assuming no increase in any of the spending plans. Yes?
And just to confirm, the motor vehicle tax, we still get to capture some of the grant, the monies from the state because of the, the mill rate difference over the, the phase in period.
Let's, do you want to have Erica answer that question?
Sure.
Okay. And she has her microphone at her.
Yes, we will still receive at, uh, these mill rates, we will still receive some of that motor vehicle transition grant. However, the more you drop that mill rate, obviously, the less you're getting. So, you know, if you look at the phase for year one and two, we're at a thirty-eight point nine six, we would get the, the difference in the mill rate between the thirty-two point four six cap. But then when year two, when you drop it to a thirty-three point seven, you've just lost revenue from that grant. So now you have to find another revenue source to make up that difference, to keep year two's mill rate at the projected thirty-three point seven.
Correct, and there's some question whether that, whether we'll even be able to tax motor vehicles in the future, so it's not known or not certain, correct?
Correct, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're looking at like twenty thirty for that, though.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they've brought that up many years in a row to try to remove the motor vehicle tax, and they haven't come up with an effective way yet. But they are looking out to that, that twenty thirty. In addition, they also every year bring before legislation, changing that motor vehicle cap. So there is no guarantee that cap is going to stay where it's at. That could change.
Okay, thank you.
And if, I'll just assign the numbers for you to that question. So currently, in GL twenty-three, the transition grants, that, that mill rate, the grant as a result of the mill rate cap was five million four hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars. If you went with a two-year phase in, and the first year drops that mill rate to thirty-eight point nine six, the transition great would be, grant would be one million nine hundred sixteen thousand two hundred six dollars. So to Erica's points, you know, the closer you get to the state mandated cap, the lower the states, the, lower the grant the state sends to us.
I have a question, and maybe it's for Erica, or maybe Mayor, you can answer it. So even if we're looking at the two-year, which would be the most that I would predict is sustainable for a city that needs to increase contractual obligations and has to have some budget growth, why year one are we looking at a decrease versus a level, basically level set for taxpayers, and then incrementals from there? Why, why do we have to realize a decrease in year one?
A decrease in the, in the mill rate, or decrease?
No, a decrease in the residential pay, average payment. You know, why are we negative four twenty in year one?
Because you would only be implementing a fifty percent of the increase. So if, if your assessment increases one hundred thousand dollars as a result of GL twenty-four, and we do a two-year phase in, in year one, only fifty thousand dollars would be implemented, and the taxes would be based on, you know, the, the base rate of twenty twenty-three plus fifty, and in year two, the full one hundred thousand would show up.
If you, if, if I could.
Please.
If you look at that, the first year, yes, they're seeing a reduction of four hundred and twenty dollars. But if you look down at the business personal property, they are paying a considerable more. And then in that second year, you're seeing they're paying less, but your residential is paying more. So it's just shifting the tax dollars back and forth between business personal property and your residential.
Yes, I just don't know how much sense this makes.
I know. And Stacy, just to your point, when we talk about the, so I'm looking at the first long box, green, fill, two-year impact, assuming no growth and flat budget. The commercial shows a three hundred and ninety-five dollar increase over the twenty twenty-three grand list, correct?
Correct.
All right, so in, so while we say an increase, I don't know how to ask this question. I don't know how you, how, how the board members are going to ask these questions. So if the commercial property, which was originally assessed at two hundred two thousand dollars, with the new assessed value at two eighty-three five fifty-six, with no phase in, the taxes would be nine million seventy-three dollars, correct? Am I reading this box correctly? No phase in?
Nine thousand.
What did I say?
Nine million.
Oh, sorry. I took some Benadryl earlier, so forgive me. Nine thousand seventy-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. With the phase in, year one, their tax would be nine thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars. Year two.
Year two is the nine thousand five hundred and fifty-five.
Yeah, why doesn't it become the nine thousand seventy-three? Oh, I know why. I, I know the answer to my question already. It's because of the one-time revenues. Once those one-time revenues are lost, that second year is going to increase.
Yes.
Got it?
See, what's hard for me to wrap my head around is how we're going to tell businesses, larger businesses on a much higher scale than that average, and then small businesses, to pay the brunt upfront while the tax, while the residents are getting a break.
Yeah.
Versus, you know, the residents getting, going minus, which I, I think everybody can anticipate that their house values are up. It's going to see an increase eventually. So I just, again, I just don't know how much sense this makes, because, you know, year one, we go to, you know, we go to small businesses, and I don't know what the percentage is on that, I could probably do the math, but, you know, you're talking about a twenty-five percent increase to all the small businesses in town, but at the same time, we're giving the taxpayers almost five hundred dollar a year break. Whereas, you know, and then eventually, we get to the point of, okay, well, now you're going up three fifteen, and we're going to come back down on the business personal property in year two. But at the same time, we have to hold a flat budget, so it's just, I don't know.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I, I think we have to stop saying a break, because their taxes are still going to go up. It's not by as much.
Correct.
And so when we're saying, um, property owners are going, are getting a break, they're not, because if we, if we use that terminology, somebody is going to think that they are going to pay less taxes than they were paying last year, and that's not the case. And this whole thing is complicated enough, and so they're paying less of an increase.
Right, right.
But they're not.
They are, Lorraine, this is showing that they would receive a break.
It's showing that, it's showing negative four hundred and twenty is the average.
So whether they pay it now or they paid it later, their tax bills would be, it's a reduction in the amount this year. In year one, it is a reduction in, in the average cost of what they're going to pay on residential property tax.
Not, not, not as compared to the taxes they've just paid on the GL twenty-three. Their taxes are still going up.
By break, meaning it will go less than if.
That is correct. That is the, that's the proper way to say it.
Okay, so this is showing, yeah, so that's where the confusion's coming from then.
So it, it, it just is, is something that I think we need to be careful, because for sure, when they open that tax bill, and they'll know what they paid last year, that it's not less than last year.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Mayor, I would just like, and I appreciate the City Council asking for this meeting, because obviously, the final decision on the budget comes to all of us over here. So if you're asking for my opinion as a Board of Finance member, being on the Subcommittee or Ad Hoc Committee for the budget, we've been studying everything closely. And I personally wasn't really considering this phase in. I, I am this type of person who rip off the Band-Aid, just get it over with, because we all know it's coming. I would support a two-year phase in if you absolutely felt adamantly that you wanted to do something. I, I don't really support a phase in. I think, again, I, this is, I mean, look at this, we're confusing as we look at it. And, and the reality is, what, what is going to happen next year? What is going to happen next year? Nobody knows. So all of this great stuff that we have in front of us is wonderful, and I appreciate everybody doing what they've done, but the reality is, we have no idea what's going to happen next year. So everything we are planning on here, and anything that you would vote on today, could go out the window next year as it stands. And the reality is, there would be a budget increase on top of it all. So my two cents, I think we should just eliminate the phase in. If for some reason the City Council feels that it's necessary to help give that, lift that burden, as, as Ms. Pesky has said, there's going to be an increase. To lift that burden and have them plan over two years, the problem is, the second year, they don't know what their increase is going to be. And, and that's, and that's part of the problem.
It'll be hard to call in the assessor's office, it's the same way, you know, I mean, I think it's bad right now, you know, if they're going to be calling next year when they're like, well, I thought, you know, they don't understand what's going on.
No, no, and I think the reality is, the important thing we've been talking about constantly now is what's happening with the state budget. Now I'm hearing what's happening with the federal budget, the state doesn't know what they're going to do. That's going to happen again, you know, things are going to, so there's too many ifs, what-ifs, there's too many I-don't-knows, there's whatever. And so unfortunately for the taxpayers, this is a reality. We see it happening. We've tried to explain, unfortunately, during this revale, the market was the market for residential. Commercial properties weren't selling, therefore, the shift is going to the residential properties. But at the same point, they would know. This year, they would know what their burden is this July, they would know technically what it is next July. If we start doing all this stuff, the poor assessor's office on everything else, so that's just my thoughts.
This is very confusing, I think, for a lot of us to understand, so just imagine trying to explain this to the taxpayer. Okay, here's how this is going to work. We're going to lessen your blow this year, but then the following year, you're going to realize that increase. Whereas, the traditional budgeting practices that we have, I feel, I feel can be more transparent. Something I always hear from the taxpayers is, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, I don't want to use a derogatory term, but if you're going to do it, just do it and explain it to us versus, you know, bringing in some type of complicated system. Again, if, if we were to do some type of phase in, I would not be in support of any more than the two-year phase in.
And just to, I know Councilman Kevin Arrow has a question, just to, to Ms. Pesky's comments, don't call it a break, don't call it a, you know, a reduction. So I just did the real quick math using these numbers that Stacy has provided. The tax increase, the percentage of the tax increase, of course, I just wrote it down and then closed my page, in this scenario with a two-year phase in. If we do not phase in at all, the tax on this piece of property that was assessed at ninety-seven, seven-ten, new assess, one eighty-five, six fifty. If we just do a full-scale implementation of the assessment or the grand list, those taxes go up twenty-six point seven percent. If we phase it in over two years, in year one, it is a seventeen point seven five percent increase. So I don't know if that'll be easier to explain to the taxpayers what, you know, what's happened with their taxes?
Well, so why, the, the increase she has on here showing from the twenty-three to twenty-four grand list, on that ninety-seven, seven-ten to one eighty-five, six fifty is twelve fifty-three?
Mayor.
Please, Councilman Kevin Arrow, yeah.
First I have a question, and then I have a comment on, on where I stand on this. The question is ECS, I'm a little confused. How does the impact to the ECS, whether we phase it or not phase in, can you describe that?
I cannot.
Is it significant?
I am not part of that process. I only know that it's on the OPM municipal impact sheet. How it impacts them, I don't, I.
Does anyone know?
I thought because we're an alliance district, it doesn't affect it at all.
Correct, it stays frozen.
Terrific.
Yes.
Having, okay, having, then, then I will move on. I agree with, I agree with the Board of Finance people, I said this last, I think I said this last time. I think the two-year is best for two reasons. Number one, I, I just think doing it in one year is too much of a hit for anybody. And people have, you know, people have a lot of considerations, financial considerations that are at least two years out in terms of vacation, in terms of moving, in terms of this, that, and the other thing. Giving them that extra year to adjust for this, I think is just, I think it's fair and reasonable. And I think we can, I think we can sell that idea, Mayor, that basically your taxes are going to go up in, in two phases, year one and year two, okay? It's a big hit, but we're going to, we're going to step it up and just explain it that way, that you're going to see an increase this year, and you're going to see a second increase, and that will be your baseline after we're doing this specifically for you, the taxpayer, to be able to plan your life, plan your vacations, plan your purchases, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then at that point, you know, the only thing that will change will be depending on, you know, the city, the city budget, just like in every other year. And I think that gives the mayor, I think gives Board of Finance, some degree of control over messaging this over a two-year period, and I think that's the best we can do, and then let's, let's move forward. So let's move forward.
Is that a motion?
Done.
Counsel, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Pesky.
Part of the challenge for all of us is that we were all, we had all our eggs in the basket, that the revaluation was going to help lower the mill rate. And that everything being equal, it was all going to be the same, and maybe we could add a little bit to the budget, and, but your taxes wouldn't go up like that. That's going to have to be also part of the explanation and the messaging, is what happened with this revaluation, that it's so egregious on the private homeowners, and not as much on, on the commercial side. And what other things do we have in the hopper that we hope will be able to bring the city up to snuff, so that we, it wouldn't be so much of a, of a burden going, going forward? But no, none, nobody was expecting this. I, I certainly was.
Me either.
And that was not what I was telling people.
Right.
You know, as we were waiting for the. You know, as we were waiting for those envelopes to come. Um, and I were just, just saying, I had to explain at Easter, not Easter, Mother's Day dinner with all my Torrington relatives yesterday. Um, it's, it's not going to be necessarily pretty. Um, and so no, and by phasing it in over, nobody knew this was coming. So nobody has saved any extra money.
Right.
That's going to be the real problem. Nobody has any extra money for these taxes. And I don't think we should talk about vacations. That's not a good.
They have money in common, point of fact, you know, their own budget, their own monies.
Yeah, uh, yeah. I mean, if, in a distressed municipalities, there's a lot of people that don't take vacations. So I don't think we, we should necessarily include that. But, you know, their, their eggs are not any, really any cheaper than, than they were yet. And, um, medical bills and all, and, and all those other things that are, are affecting them. But by phasing it in over two years, you're going to understand that as hard as it is, if you put, I mean, anybody that's got a mortgage, the bank is going to do it for them.
Right.
And in, in their escrow accounts. Um, everybody else that doesn't have a mortgage or rents, and that we know that this is a, a big portion. And we know that the property taxes, the property values on the rentals, I mean, on the multifamily, went up even more than on the single-family homes.
I would ask, Mayor, if I can, I, I think what would be helpful for at least me and some of the board of finance members would, to be to start taking a look at that, what we called the base sheet earlier, and, um, look at the different mill rates associated with where we come out there and how it impacts the budget, and how it impacts the average amount taxed to the taxpayers before we make any other decisions. That, that would be my recommendation to the council is to let us, at our May meeting, um, let us digest that a little bit more before we recommend anything either way. Again, that's just my personal view. Um, I, I'd like to see all, all the scenarios.
Well, I'm, we can send those spreadsheets. I know the subcommittee looked at them. Uh, they are available. Um, the challenge that we have right now is, um, we're not setting a mill rate here in this meeting.
Right.
That's not, that's not the purpose of this. The purpose is to decide, you know, is there some tax relief by phasing the grand list in over a two-year period of time? So, as I said a little bit earlier, if we just, I, I keep using the phrase, rip the Band-Aid off and drop this mill rate to 32, um, property taxes, in this scenario that Stacy has provided you, um, will, the taxes will go up 25.7%. If we phase it in over two years, because I am hearing a com, a fairly consistent comfort level with two years, that first year increase would only be 17%. So, um, you know, that's, and that's based on the numbers in front of you. You know, once the board of finance gets this and decides, what does that mill rate look like, you know, those numbers even will change. But the, the reason we need to make this decision this evening is because, to your point, you want to start seeing those spreadsheets on what are the spending plans, what is the revenue, where are the gaps in those? And, um, the city council over the next week are going to have public hearings and joint meetings with the board of safety to talk about those spending plans. Um, Stacy, whatever decision is made, and I would hope that there would be a decision made here this evening, um, Stacy has to then, um, submit to OPM. Um, and that, you know, that's not telling OPM what our mill rate is going to be. That's telling OPM, the legislative body of the city of Torrington, which is the city council, made the decision they were going to phase this in, or made the decision, they're just going to do a full implementation. So I know, talking about the numbers. Essentially, what you've explained to us now, for, for some of us, like this is the third or fourth time, and I appreciate so much you, you, the patience that you've shown us, um, that it's like doing the whole assessment all over again. All buyers are basically buyers.
Correct. I don't want to stand up here and, you know, woe is the assessor's office. We're going to have a lot of work. We're adults. We will do it. Um.
But that's why we have to decide tonight.
You have to decide tonight because I have a June 1 deadline for reports, and the decision you make will change how I report to the state. Um, and if I don't get them done by June 1, then there is penalties to the city. They're not significant, but there are penalties to the city. Um, but yes, there is a significant amount of work. Um, I've got to pretty much redo everything we've done in, what, a two-week period? And then for the amount of the phase in, we have to maintain two databases the whole time.
Yeah, and just, I was just going to say to double down, one of, somebody on the board of finance says, I think it's you, Mr. Bias, and I agree. I mean, thinking of this in five years and trying to explain this to people in five years, you know, that it's going up again, it's going up again, it's going up with a different amount, and a different amount, and a different amount. Absolutely not. Absolutely, we should avoid that at all costs because then it, it, it really goes to confidence in your city government, you know, that we know what the hell we're doing. Okay? Um, we know what we're doing with this. We know why. We're having a hard time literally adjusting for it ourselves to try to explain it to the body politic. It's just nuts. And it will just have a demoralizing, continuing, ongoing, demoralizing effect, and which would be reflected in the crazy amount of work you have to do every year, recalibrate everything. So once again, the two-year to me seems to be the best of the two bad situat, uh, scenarios.
Yeah, but no, no pressure there on the recalibration. Uh, but I do want to surface another play. Uh, you could vote for the longest phase in and vote anywhere along the line to discontinue it. So you, you could have the lowest impact year one and year two, discontinue it. Uh, this would just provide your residents abilities to save or make changes, uh, to, to what they're doing to accommodate to a higher tax level. It's that initial first year. So the longest phase in would have the lowest impact than, than a simple two-year phase in. Uh, so just put that in as a consideration. Uh, also, what, you know, seems like low dollar amounts on the average taxpayer are significant uh, because of other, you know, stresses that, that we have high utility bills that they've been paying, high grocery bills, high inflation, uh, over the past five years.
Is there another scenario where, uh, we, I'm sorry.
Mr. Wright has the floor. Go ahead.
Uh, where, where we rip off the Band-Aid. Is there a rainy day fund that the city can on at least the first year?
Sure. So yes, there are funds in fund balance, and we could go a little deeper. These mill rates that Stacy's using in her model and that, um, I had crunched for the council last week, took into consideration that we would be going back into fund balance for $3.9 million. Uh, one of the questions was, could we go a little bit deeper into fund balance and not violate the policy? Yes, we could. However, um, that is a one-time revenue. So when I'm listening to the sensitivity of what, what will this do for next year, that is a one-time revenue. That would, it's, it's a hole you create in next year's budget, and you'd have to fill that. But, uh, yes, there are funds in the fund balance. We could go a little deeper.
Mayor, if I may, to Mr. Bias's question, um, these mill rates that you see on here, and I know you were trying to compare the revenues to the expenses, so these mill rates that were calculated, were calculated based off of, you know, what we're anticipating the budget to be for fiscal year '26. So these would be basically flat funding the budget.
Right. And, and I think that's my concern with not exceeding, um, past two years, is I, I don't want this body, that body, or any other city body to look at it and say, okay, for four years, budgets are flat. That's going to be a detriment to our police, fire, public works, streets, roads, everything. Um, so a, again, you know, if there were anything, I think the two-year is the maximum that makes sense. Um, and that, that would probably be my only objection to four years. I understand we could pull out at any time, but I think setting the expectation that for the next four years, these bodies can produce a flat budget is pretty unrealistic. So.
If I could, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To Councilman Iven's point, yes, a, a five-year, um, phase in can be abandoned, I'll say, at any time. Um, but what you do have to remember is the longer you phase this out, any increased buildings that come in, anything that comes into the city does not come in at 100%. It comes in at that phased-in value. So it's going to stunt any growth that may be there. Um, and also, anything that comes down in or removed, comes out at a 100% rate. There is no option to phase out an assessment on something that's reduced.
And to that point, because I know that another, a number of municipalities have done that, and I think that Steve from Equality shared that, that was his experience in his, one of his communities. But, um, does it feel disingenuous to say, we're going to do a five-year phase in, and we're going to abandon it in year two upfront? I mean, I, I, I kind of feel like that's, that's a mixed message. So, um, I, I appreciate where the councilman is going. It's try to, you know, try to get that, you know, that biggest, um, uh, saving they can in the early year. But if OPM pulls up our minutes and says, uh, they said they were going to do five years, when they're going to abandon it after a year, I don't, I don't know that the, that's a, a really, um, a lot of integrity in that vote.
Mayor, if I can.
Yeah, please.
So we look at these numbers, and we see year two, we do a three-year, four-year phase in. These are all based off of assumptions. So there's going to be a new assessment every single year on these properties, which means residential and commercial can come back and appeal as well.
Yes. So every year, the, the assessment increases every year by whatever is decided in the phase in. So every year, the residents will have a new notice sent out to them, showing them the increase in their assessment. And yes, every year, they have the ability then to come in and appeal.
Right.
Um, and the longer you spread it out, the more they get frustrated with it, the more they're apt to come in purely out of that frustration, that I'm tired of this increase, and another increase, and another increase, you know? So, so they take it amongst themselves that they have to come in and appeal, um, just, like I said, purely out of that frustration.
Right.
Because they're getting noticed year after year after year.
And there seems to be some mixed thought on whether the values are going to increase or if they're going to level off in the future. So we're looking at these assessments where people can come back and argue them and say, no, my house is worth less now. Right?
So the values that are put in place for the 2024 are set for five years. Um, what's changing is the increase due to the, the phase in.
Right. But if they appeal it, they're going to go and get an appraisal done, and that appraisal is going to be based off of 2025, 2026, whatever year they get that appraisal done in.
Uh, no, the appraisal has to trend it back to 2024.
So I guess going back to my greater point is wondering why we can't do some type of phase in with, um, sorry, I don't know if it's possible, and why I wanted to see all the numbers on the spreadsheet and, and look at fund balance. We're talking about 9%, right? 26 down to 17%. Is that something we can afford to do with fund balance ourselves without locking into a phase in?
That, that does not impact the fund balance. That reduction from 25 to 17, um, everything is equal. So that doesn't mean we're going deeper into fund balance. It doesn't mean anything. It just, it's just based on the phase in. If you only bring in 50% of the assessment in year one, and the other 50% comes in year two, so does not change any of the other revenues.
Right, but can we do it without this program?
Yeah.
On our own?
Yes.
For fund balance?
Yes.
Sort of where I was.
Well, no, no. I'm sorry. No, not to that, not to that, uh, that's a very steep, um, dig into fund balance.
Yeah, so that's.
And I think that you'd be, you'd be accomplishing the same thing, you know, if, you know, if you said, let's cover this, uh, you know, this extra. I don't know who did this sheet with a, you know, with a five-pitch font on it. But, um, so let's just stay with that one. If you were looking to cover an extra $9 million, you couldn't, uh, we couldn't take that out of fund balance. With this phase in, that is $9 million, um, in year one, and then it brings you up in year two. But there's no way we can cover that nine in fund balance. And even if we covered some of that, it's one-time revenue. In year two, our taxpayers are going to have to come up with a bigger increase anyways. Please, yes. I know, Councilwoman, I'm begging for attention.
I don't really want the, I think this is, there's a, there's no win in this, no matter what. Um, there are so many assumptions that have been made in the numbers that the assessor has given us, um, the assumption that our mill rate's going to be 32, and who knows? You guys have work to do. And we all wanted to meet with you. I can say that really, you know, unanimously, that we felt we couldn't make a decision about a phase in, you know, without a conversation with all of you. Um, it's raining, so I'm really supportive of the people's money. That fund balance is the people's money, um, to use it. And I know that the mayor has and the subcommittees indicated they've put in 3.9.
Yes, yes.
You know, maybe you need to put more in, um, and whether or not that'll make a difference or not. But I, I am not for a phase in. I am, I know we've said, bite the bullet, um, rip the Band-Aid. You're delaying your credit card payment. Um, and I guess maybe being raised in the 50s and 60s, you were taught to really pay your bills. Nobody had any control of this. Um, the assessment value of our homes, our property has gone up and exorbitantly. We all, serving in the city council and the board of finance, you all live in Torrington, it's not just hurting the people we represent, it's hurting all of us. So, um, I, I, it, in my mind, you just need to just bite the bullet, the Band-Aid, pay your credit card. Um, and, you know, so I am not for any phase in, and will oppose whether it's two-year or ten years. Um, I feel like this is the time that we just need to do this. And, and I am influenced a little bit by the work of our assessor's office, but not to the point, you know, you got to do what you got to do. But at the same time, I think the perception of the people, next year, they're going to come in and go, well, I thought we took care of this last year, but no. Don't you remember? We voted on a phase in. So now this year, instead of the 25%, it's whatever percentage. They don't care. They just know that they get an increase in their taxes. What we really need to do, and we've said this before, is increase our tax base. Our, our, we've got to like get more businesses. And we did invite, William had come up and.
For profit businesses.
For, okay, yes. The grand list. Um, so we all agree on that. There's no disagreement. And, you know, William had indicated we do have shovel-ready projects. You know, the mayor has been working in her 12 years to keep the taxes down, but also to prepare our properties for businesses and developers to come into Torrington. So I've been a huge advocate for decreasing that mill rate as low as we can get to attract those businesses. And whether, you know, we all agree or not agree, I do believe that developers are more attractive to a lower mill rate. So, um, that's all I got to say.
If I can too. I, you know, Councilman Cavanaro brought up a really good point before about the reasoning of doing the two-year, I know, you, about doing a two-year phase in. The reasoning behind it is to give the taxpayers time to prepare.
Right.
And that, I'm against a phase in, but for that reason, I'm for a two-year. But the other part of it is looking at a possibility of a 32-mill rate that is going to attract businesses to Torrington. We have shovel-ready properties that are ready for developers.
Even though, even though William Wallace said no.
He didn't say no. He never answered the question.
He didn't really answer the question.
He said, he, I, I, I thought I was pretty, I thought he clearly said no in point of fact. Um.
I wasn't, I, I didn't fully understand what he said. And to be honest, it, it seemed to kind of go around and around. I don't know if anybody else agrees with me. But um, I did take the time to go talk to Risto, only because we happened to be at a meeting together last week, and I asked her, what was her thought as an economic development director, what would we do with a phase in? And at first. What would we do with a phase in? And at first she's like, well, yeah, a phase in might be a good idea for the taxpayers. Until I said to her, well, we could have a 32-mill rate. And then she said, then I would not agree with the phase in because the 32 is going to attract businesses to Torrington. And we have the places for the businesses to go. We can attack some with that.
Okay. If I, if I may, can I?
Please, yeah.
I agree with, I agree with that. And I, I think, along with everybody else sitting around this semicircle here. Yeah, we have to grow the grand list. We have to bring in businesses. However, we, we do have to take into account the reality that tons and tons of taxpayers in Torrington, this is going to be a huge hit on them. They don't have the flexibility that a lot of people sitting around this semicircle have.
Absolutely. I agree with them.
So they're for two years, but we sell the people, we need to get down to this target goal of 32 in two years. Because then we can start to actually address the core problem here, which is bringing in new businesses. So it's, it's about messaging from the mayor's office and the council. It's about people in this, around this room messaging correctly the note that here's why we're doing it. It's going to be phased in two years where we have to get down to this rate. Then we can seriously attract and talk to new businesses, which will have the long-term and hopefully not so long-term effect of actually allowing us to lower the tax rate. So it's messaging, and I, I think the two-year thing is the best solution with the proper messaging.
Yeah, just an additive comment there. Wallack, William Wallack had two parts to that. One was, yes, lowering the mill rate was one of a dozen things on a new business checklist. But you don't want to impoverish your community. The amount of that tax increase will be the amount that they are not spending locally.
I think that was my policy's message, yes.
Yeah. So we, we have to be careful on amount of taxation and the, the amount that we're raising it here because other businesses are depending on those clients, those people, how much surplus funds they have. And we're, we're definitely nicking it here.
Really no disrespect to our William. But it is a perception, and I think he was also commenting the number of attracting, attracting public funds, which is, are the people's money as well, whether it be state or federal dollars. But I do think that, you know, other, it is really factual. If you look at the mill rate for New Britain, I, you pulled that up as an example last time. And I feel like, you know, they were able to decrease their mill rate. They're doing amazing things in New Britain in terms of increasing their grand lists. Not just affordable housing, but really high-end housing, you know, manufacturing. You know, we're ready for that in Torrington, you know? And I think we are all, as councilmen and women, that we are all about that, you know, attracting new businesses to Torrington. And I, so I want to, I wasn't against William's comment, but I didn't think we got a direct answer. We did get a direct answer from Stacy when we asked her that. So anyway, I'm.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going to say, he did answer the questions and he, and he, his answers were on point. Those discretionary funds are spent, you know, in our restaurants, you know, and at the Warner Theater and kids' play. And Stacy is absolutely correct, you know? Lowering this mill rate, the lowest we can get it, is going to be an attraction. So this is not one answer fits all. I think both answers are 100% correct. So, so when we do talk to the businesses and the taxpayers, those are the, those are the things, the hard things to explain to people, but I appreciate that. Do I, do I hear a motion? I don't, there was no reason to take a vote on this. This was just to open the floor for discussion?
Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can I talk?
Councilman Waldron, yes, please.
Okay. People in this town can barely afford the property taxes now, some people that is. Seniors with flat income, fixed income, right? Can't afford any big increase. Right? I had one of my neighbors really bend my ear on this one. And they can't afford to sell their house and move, so they're in a bind. I think we should go with a four- or five-year plan. Businesses will come. I think we can work more deals with tax abatement. And they can see that the tax rate will eventually hit that low amount. So I think four or five-year phase in.
It was discussion. So, so, and the, and the goal here was to get a little early feedback from the board of finance because the decision that gets made by the council is then your marching orders to do that next stage of the, of the budget development. What does that mill rate look like? How much of the fund balance do we want to use? You know, how much do we want to, you know, allow for an increase in spending or flat funding or decreases? So, so if there's anything else the board of finance feels they need to share with the council, I think I'm going to make this your last call. So we can go to the next agenda items.
And I think, Mayor, and I appreciate all of the comments made and to Councilman Waldron's point, yes, they can't afford it. We all have people in our neighborhoods that are of that age. Understanding, you know, they're going to have to come up with it. And they're going to have to come up with more every year afterwards because the budget is not going out. My request all the time is I never see government spend less money than the year before, any government. And we're not successful in that. So the reality is there are, they are going to see increases every year. We heard from, I forget where it was from, Windsor, who stated that by year three, the people revolted and came in and said, just bill is the rest. We can't deal with this anymore. So I, three, four, five years is just not, and for a board of finance, on top of it all, it's, to me, it's just debilitating. I also say anybody who's in a rental property, if I own a rental property and I have tenants whose lease is coming up in June, let's say, not July, let's say in June, I'm going to factor that rental increase for the, for the two- or three-year phase in all at once anyway. Because I'm not going to know how much, you know, every year, the budget's going to go up, the tax increase is going to go up. So even if this person who owns it knows their taxes are going up $5,000, let's say over five years, they're not going to figure they're getting $1,000 a year. They're going to worry that something's going to happen and it's going to be $1,200 next year or 13 year after. So I'm not sure phasing this in over four or five years is going to save any of those renters from a larger increase in the first or second year anyway. Because as a, as a business owner, I would never do that. And the other flip side of it for me as a business owner is this still does put the onus on the business owners with their personal property taxes. Comments were made. I will tell you in my business, my property, personal property on my equipment, over $2 million, I pay into the city, let's say $24,000 just in personal property tax. We've been carrying that weight for a long time. We have been carrying that weight of, of the school budget in the city. And so, you know, this shift is going to happen slower for us now. So those are, I, I just personally, I don't want to see it. I, I agree, Councilman Ruette, I don't want to see it at all, but if you're going, if you have to do it, I'm begging two years. Anything more than that's going to create so many problems.
Yeah. And I'll echo on what Mrs. Trob said. I mean, think of the next five years, the education budget, you'd have to flat fund. The police department, you'd have to flat fund. The Department of Public Works, you'd have to flat fund. It's, it's just, I, I just, it doesn't work financially, a four- or five-year. Again, I, I agree with Councilwoman Ruette and Mrs. Trob that if, if we had to, a two-year, but I, I also, if it were me solely to decide, I wouldn't recommend a phase in. But I think if, if we wanted to lessen that blow year one and then just get back to business on year two, it's, wouldn't be the worst thing in the world, but I, I don't recommend any further than that. It's just going to become very difficult.
I think, you know, it's based on assumptions that there's not going to be any increase in the budget. So, no, it's, it's unrealistic to sort of promise, you know, your neighbor, my neighbor, you know, because we're all getting the calls. We're all getting the scenarios, moving out of Torrington. I mean, it's, believe me. I think we've, this is probably one of the hardest decisions, you know, that we've had to make at least in the last few years. And as I mentioned, the mayor has kept that tax down.
A 2.2. Yeah, a 2.2-mill rate increase over a 10-year period of time.
Yeah.
That's, and that, that's not me, that is us. Those are, that is all the work that this council and that board of finance did.
Right. And at the end of the day, the value of your home increased. If you think that you can't put that house on the market and sell it for what that assessed value is, it's just, it's, it's happening. I mean, we're still seeing how quickly properties sell. The value of your home increased. Your taxes are going to increase.
I don't think the worry is that you can't sell your house. It's, where do you go after you're selling?
Right, right. And I think, I think the number is something like almost close to 80% of homes are mortgaged in, in Torrington. So you're talking about 80% of people are seeing that in escrow over a 12-month period. You're not seeing that on, I have to write a check on July 1st for, you know, an average of $1,200. You know, you're saying that I have to figure out, you know, the extra $80 or $120 a month over the next 12 months. So I, I would also use that as a factor in, in your decision. I know Mr. Wright.
I was, I was just going to say. Oh, okay. I think the farmers kind of stick together because I agree with Ms. Council Ruette and everything she said. It, it just rip it, rip the Band-Aid off and let's go. It's in the roots, it's in, it's in the roots, Mr. Cavan.
I guess somebody to agree with me, you know, it's not, I'm not sure I'm going to get the vote, but you know, thank you.
Again, max two years, please.
All right, final call. Anybody, anything else from the board of finance? Because again, I know that you, you have to deal with the fallout of what the decisions are made here. So if there's anything else you want to share? You're good. All right. Well, then I'm going to go ahead and call for a motion. This is item two. And instead of usually I read the motion, I'm just going to ask, is there a motion from the floor?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we do a two-year phase in of the grand list.
Okay, so I have a motion made by Councilwoman Spino for a phase-in approach of the 2024 grand list revaluation with a duration of two years. Do we have a? Sorry, so second from Councilman Cavanaro. The floor is open for discussion.
As much as I appreciate the motion coming from Molly, our Councilwoman Spino, I will be opposing for reasons I've already stated.
Okay. I will do a roll call vote, absolutely. So starting from my left, Councilman Cavanaro.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruette?
No.
Councilwoman Spino?
Yes.
Councilman Iven?
No.
Councilman Waldron?
No.
Okay, so motion fails. Do I have another motion from the floor? I need a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion for a three-year phase in.
Okay, I have a motion for a three-year phase. Okay, so Councilman Waldron's motion is for a three-year phase in. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Just to get to a vote.
Got it. I appreciate it. All right, so motion is made and seconded. I will do that roll call vote. Starting from my left, Councilman Cavanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruette?
No.
Councilwoman Spino?
No.
Councilman Iven?
No.
And Councilman Waldron?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, well, we'll just keep going through this then. Do I have a motion from the floor?
I'll make a motion to have no phase in.
So a motion made that there would be no phase in, but a full implementation of the 24, 2024 grand list. Do I have a second?
James, too bad.
Just to get to a vote, I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro. So a motion is made and seconded. Roll call, Councilman Cavanaro?
No.
Councilwoman Ruette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spino?
No.
Councilman Iven?
No.
Councilman Waldron?
No.
All right. We're running out of options here.
Do you have any darts?
Darts, yes, yeah. So I, I guess, because I see where this is going, if I open the floor again, I think we're just going to be doing the same.
Vibration.
Yeah. So I'm struggling with how to get the council to an agreement. And while I am, I'm, I have mixed emotions doing this, is, you know, you heard Councilman Iven suggest that perhaps a longer phase in, that maybe part of the motion is, you know, that it is phased in over a period of time, but that phase in would have to be brought back to the council annually to determine whether or not it would be revoked.
Mayor, point of order?
Please.
Through my incredible psychic powers, we may, we may revisit the vote on, on a two-year phase in.
Is that a motion, Councilman Cavanaro?
I'll make a motion.
All right, so Councilman Cavanaro made a motion to do the two-year phase in. Councilwoman Spino seconded. I'm going to do the roll call, Councilman Cavanaro. Councilwoman Ruette?
Reluctantly, yes.
Councilwoman Spino?
Yes.
Councilman Iven?
Yes.
And Councilman Waldron?
Yes.
There we go. All right, so that's good work. That's good work. I appreciate all of you. All right. Yeah, so I'm sorry. Getting very nervous. So there's no more business before these boards. Could I kindly have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.